Welcome to the Monday, September eighth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Our student liaisons are playing sports. We have, they know that we have a volleyball game tonight and a couple other sports playing, so our student athletes cannot be here tonight. So we'll start off with our reports and discussions. We have Mr. Brian Bragginton Smith, President of the Lewis Bay Research Center, as he discussed with us a partnership with Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee. Just make sure the green light's on, Brian.
On, there we go. Boy, you can really tell when it works. I want to, I want to thank you for the invitation to come here and speak with you. This is something that has been ongoing for some time, and, and we're making some very significant progress. And it's my hope and it's my objective for the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School System main campus to become the flagship for sustainability, resiliency, and helping our kids prepare for the twenty second century. So that having been said, I guess we'll go right into the presentation. As you can see here, I'm with the Lewis Bay Research Center, and we've been actively engaged in science, offshore, science and, and resource development for, you know, the past twenty five years. And what you're seeing there is a, is a barge that is installing the Fiddlehead Rock Monitoring Platform in the middle of Lewis Bay. That was back in two thousand and six. Now, what is, what is going on right now is, is related to these two images. Now, if you look at that, on the right, you see the Earthshot Prize with David Edinburgh. And on the left is, you know, sort of our, our local boy, John F. Kennedy. And it was that comment in his speech that got me going on this path. You know, sort of do what you gotta do and reach beyond your grasp, because that's, that's where the future is made. And that's basically what's going on. Now, the reason I mentioned the Earthshot Prize is because the Earthshot Prize was put together by the, by the British Crown, the, the King of England and Prince William. And it was designed to facilitate and to embrace the concept of JFK's speech. And that is, you know, instead of it being a moonshot, let's make it an earthshot. Let's get our stuff together and let's save the planet that we all share. And that's basically where things are at. The exciting part about this is that our project, the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Eco Campus, has been accepted by the Earthshot Prize and has been categorized as a Earthshot Project. So we are in the process of competing for that, and I think it's a very exciting thing for the kids, because the kids are wondering how things are going to be in the future, and, and, you know, how do we deal with these issues? And that's what this is all about. Now, I, I have to sort of throw this out there. I, I travel around in some interesting circles, the, the National Academy of Sciences, you know, top level stuff. And as a result of that, you know, a lot of the publications that are coming out, sort of giving us the, the latest information on, on where we're at, are, are giving us kind of a, of a serious picture. And that is that, that we're currently in a scenario where our planet is, is in a shift as a result of, as a result of global warming. And this shift could be very catastrophic. However, if we mobilize and if we act, then we should be able to mitigate some of this. And in fact, according to, you know, some of the soothsayers in the, in the market, what they're saying is that this isn't a dilemma, this isn't a crisis, this is an opportunity. And we've got to take that opportunity and, and pursue it. And that's basically what we're doing here. As you can see here, this is a map of Cape Cod. Now, the big circle in the center is basically where we are right now, the D Y Eco Campus. We're working to, to bring the scientific centers to, to the Cape. And in doing that, we've identified three locations, the D Y Eco Campus, the, a project in Forest Dale and Sandwich called the Sandwich Green Project, and we're working on the Pamit River Project. And these are to be able to help kids across the Cape, to be able to, to, to participate in this, in this new venue and this new opportunity. So, oh, went backwards. There we go. Pardon the, the rough image here. This was created before the actual middle school wasn't done. So, so it's a little bit crude. This was back around twenty nineteen, I guess, you know, just before COVID. And, and we were putting this together to facilitate where we were going and what we were gonna do. Now, during that period, we've been working with Rotary International, and Rotary International has categorized this as a, as a major project of, of interest. And as a result of that, we formed a collaborative initiative with a group for, from the, from the Susquehanna River watershed in upstate New York. And we'll be knitting together a relationship between the New, New Route Charter School in Ithaca and the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School System to share information and to share knowledge back and forth between the two regions. The, the idea here is to, is to create an experiential learning platform that allows students to be able to, to get some hands-on, real-time, advanced science in the, in the venues that are gonna be required for our, the, the challenges of this new reality. And, and as you can see, you know, sort of we're, we're into that right now. Now, this, some of these slides are from a major presentation that I made to Rotary International, their S R A group. And basically what we're talking about here is, is community resiliency and sustainability. And, you know, how do we get there from here? Well, the way to get there from here is you have to look at things from a systemic standpoint. You have to look at things from the viewpoint that everything's connected. So you need to do more than just one thing in order to be able to deal with, with this multifaceted crisis. That's what we're doing. That's what we've been up to for the past twenty years now. And basically what it boils down to is that the new reality is gonna be based on this, this everything is connected concept, because it is. You know, as a result of the internet and, and the world wide web, everything is connected. And, and that future reality is artificial intelligence and, and, and being able to, to utilize that tool in order to be able to effectuate these things. Now, it's not just, you know, the institutional buildings and the, and the commercial buildings, but what we're really talking about is having to deal with all of these things right down to each individual home level. And, and it's all, it's all in play. Now, I mentioned the Sandwich Project. This is, is a site plan for that project, and basically it's a, it's a net zero affordable housing project that will be able to provide somewhere in the order of three hundred, three hundred and fifty affordable workforce housing units when it's constructed. The, the facility is, is going to be a net zero facility. No water, no energy pollution. It's all renewable energy powered. You can see there's a, there's a fairly significant ground mounted solar project there. That's also gonna be an agrivoltaic installation, which means that it's actually a farming operation that captures the value of the, of the solar energy. And, and that will be used in order to power the entire development. The wastewater system treats to advanced tertiary level so that all of that water is actually able to be used as a recharge resource, to recharge the aquifer, because water is going to be a crisis in the twenty second century, and we've got to start to deal with it today. And that's what this is all about. Infrastructure wise, you know, this is smart communications. The streetlights communicate with each other. They have sensors that can tell us what's going on throughout the neighborhood, and that, that includes being able to have sensors that will sense for CO2 and dissolved oxygen. It's even got sensors that will listen for a gunshot or a loud noise and report that something's going on. We, this is, this is the future. And if we embrace it and if we help our kids understand how to apply it, then they're gonna be in a lead. And that's, that's really what my objective is. Now, what you see here is, on the left is the, the infrastructure cluster, what you might call. And that's the water, wastewater recycling system. Now, the building on the right is, the reason that this slide is in here, actually, is that that building is, is a, is an open plan, steel span building. The roof of that is two hundred and fifty KW, so the, so the building becomes a renewable energy platform. Now, at the school, what we're gonna end up doing is the central core, which is the central area there, which is ten thousand square feet, would be used for classroom space, laboratories, and that. The two wings that you see would be used for agrivoltaics, hydroponics, and, and urban agriculture, which are gonna be important elements for our future. And by the way, the kids at D Y are, are doing a heck of a job with that. I am really, really proud of what they're doing. But this will give that, that facility a major amount of classroom and laboratory capabilities. One of the things that we're working with now, and is already being applied with the, with the agricultural project over there in front of the high school, is new technologies. This is, you see here is something called biochar. Biochar is a, is a, basically it's a wood product. And, and what ends up happening is that, that by creating this, you sequester carbon. Now, then you can take that, that biochar material, and it can be mixed in with the soil. It, it, it actually can increase the overall productivity of the soil by as much as three hundred percent. It does that because the biochar acts as a sponge. It absorbs water, and it also has an affinity for attracting nutrients. So when you put the nutrients down in the ground to feed the plants, instead of it just percolating through and going into the groundwater as it normally would, the, the biochar takes it, holds it, and releases it slowly, and that's how you get that, that yield. As a matter of fact, we've been seeing some remarkable things. It's not the only place where it can be used. As a matter of fact, we're using it in some experiments over at the school, and what we're doing is mixing it with different building materials, concrete, asphalt. Basically what it does is it turns what was a, what was a potential pollutant source into a clean energy source. So it's basically, again, solving for that carbon issue. And, and this is, you know, twenty first century, twenty second century technology. What you see there is an algae photobioreactor in a hydroponic system. That's the kind of stuff that we're gonna be doing in that, in that new building. And actually, the, the, the image below there shows the, the algae hydroponics and, and the, the algae pool. What you see above there, in that little portico that looks like a, like a solarium, that's actually all photovoltaic glass. So that is a greenhouse, but it is a, it produces its own energy. So it's a pretty cool thing. We've already, we've got seven panels over at the high school right now that, that were the original units that were tested by UL for that product, which we'll be, we'll be installing over at the school, which is kind of a cool thing. Again, one of the things that needs to happen is urban agriculture. We need to expand green space. We need to enhance food security, create a higher circular economic value for our communities, which will result in healthier and more vibrant communities. Now, this is the last slide, and the reason it's the last slide is that Rotary International, I'm, I'm a member of the cadre of technical advisors for Rotary International. And, and we are committed to, to education, eliminating climate change and pollution, eliminating polio, bringing about economic development. I did say education, right? And, and then, you know, vaccines and, and eliminating, you know, the threat of, of polio and other problematic diseases. Now, I mention that because Rotary International has one point two million people that are members of the organization, and we spend a lot of money, hundreds of millions of dollars every year. And this project is a major project for Rotary. So we're gonna see a lot of activity, a lot of support from Rotary with what we're doing here at D Y. So that's kind of the overview. I will be happy to come back and get into more details about the specifics of it. But, but this was kind of the first opportunity that I had to come in and actually kind of introduce you to what we're doing. And that was what my purpose was tonight. And Mark, thank you very much for, for orchestrating that and putting that together and all of your support.
Thank you so much, Brian. I almost understood every word you said, so I appreciate it. I don't always, so I appreciate that. Anyone, any of the members have any questions for Brian? Mr. Morris?
The newness of the projects are impressive, because you're making, getting success and making changes. But sometimes when we have a new project such as, in the, in the country for sustainability, sustainability for oil fracking, for example, which leads to new oil and new earthquakes, you almost have to anticipate in advance what are the negatives that somebody will bring up, either because you're so successful, or because it occurred late at night in a bull session where they thought of things that may not have been public domain. So I think you're taking the show on the road, even though this road starts here, is, is superb.
Thank you.
I should mention that I should mention that Brian and I have been supportive friends for a number of years. So it's not that he's new to me, but his ideas are new. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Landers?
Thank you very much. I guess my big question is, I'm a little bit confused about where we are in this process. You know, I'm looking at plans and drawings and specs, and you're talking about this, you know, these classrooms and what we're building. And so I just, where are we in this process?
We've had a memorandum of understanding in place since 2019. And as everyone knows, right after 2019, we got hit by COVID. And COVID derailed everything. So realistically, we're just coming back in, in the discussion with D Y. Now, that doesn't mean that the whole discussion has been stagnant. Because I think you can see by the presentation, you know, it takes quite a bit to get into Earthshot, just to be someone that they will even listen to. To be chosen and selected as an Earthshot company, not necessarily guaranteeing you 1.5 million dollars, but guaranteeing you that you're going to get the support of the Earthshot organization and that it is something that they view as an important evolutionary step that we should be pursuing. So it's, I have not stopped doing what I'm doing, because that's what I do. But what I'm doing today is, we have, Mark and I have just signed an extension to that M O U agreement. And that is kind of the official relaunch of the program. So a lot of investment has been made in what we're doing and what you see before you. And more is going to be put in.
Ms. Landers?
And so this New Roots Charter Schools in Ithaca, New York already exists and already has this program running, and we are duplicating that?
No. New Roots Charter Schools is a member of the Project Green Schools group. They're a nationally acclaimed green school. Ithaca, New York is a community that is one of the few communities in the United States that has gone absolutely net zero. They have gone to sustainable development. And the New Roots Charter School is following that path. Now, they were not doing this. They have asked us to come and work with them to replicate what we're doing here, there. So this platform that we're talking about here is being picked up and supported by Rotary to replicate it over there. Okay, so this is starting on Cape Cod. This is the breakthrough location. And by a point of information, I was born at the Cape Cod Hospital. I went to Marguerite Mall School. I was in fifth grade when I went there. And actually, that was the year the Thresher went down. That was the year they opened the Marguerite Mall School. I went through D Y. I had five letters in gymnastics. Try to figure out how you do that. And my professional background, I've been to Washington, D.C. I've worked with the Clinton administration. I've worked with NOAA. And in all of those roles, what they were doing was asking me to help share my vision with them. All I'm doing here is bringing that vision to my home, to make my home the place where it starts and where we take this to the rest of the world.
Ms. Landers?
Last question. So I don't think I realized at the beginning, when you mentioned this Earthshot Prize, that that is what funds a project, this project? And if, so how do you, if we don't get the Earthshot Prize, this, there's no, how does the funding work for this?
We can let Dr. Smith answer some of that as well.
Oh, great, okay, whoever.
Yeah, so, and I think, I want to, because Brian's not giving himself credit for some of the small things either, right? So like, this is the big picture vision. But I also don't want to lose sight of stuff that, so just take the Community Garden, which we all can celebrate as a success and win for D Y. It wouldn't have happened without others and Brian. So Brian and Lewis Bay Research was an integral partner. And so like, a lot of the stuff that he displayed here is a smaller scale version of action steps that have been successful in bringing, it's not 100% net zero, but it's getting us in that direction, right? And bringing hands-on learning experiences for our students. And again, was brought through this partnership. Is it hydroponics, is that the right term? Right, so, and as a part of that connected piece, we actually have a small hydroponics lab that's being developed inside the school, at the high school, right? Again, through partnership with Lewis Bay. And then he mentioned the glass panels, which are being replaced at the greenhouse, right? So we're having these smaller scale opportunities that are being developed where this is, somewhere on one of the first slides, it was like, Think Big, right? So then this is like the Earthshot, the Dreamshot, whatever term you want to use. Eventually, and we've talked about this, like, this is our dream. Our dream would be like, the D Y has this place where this is happening on like a huge scale, like nothing else that none of us have ever really experienced, where our kids are having this experiential learning and then, you know, where we're tying in the whole campus in a way that's not only making the campus net zero, but is then also just creating an opportunity for our kids to get this hands-on learning experience on how this all works, right? But yeah, there's, to your point, this is like, from a logistical standpoint, 1,000 hurdles we still have to get over in order to get there. But we don't want to then show up like at the end of the day, and you're all like, hey, where'd this come from? So this is, this was, you know, Brian and I, you know, I, this predates me, right? So I was getting caught up in meetings with Brian. And now we figured this is a good time for you all as a committee. And the reality is, we don't know. It's been two years that Brian and I have been having this conversation, and we're here. I don't know. I don't know how many of you all will still be on the committee by the time we get this actualization. I don't know. But we still, it felt like this was the right time. There is some momentum building, and it felt like now is the right time.
Now, I might add that, and it's just, I'm just mentioning this, I'm not, you know, kind of claiming it. We were authorized for a 1.3 million dollar Economic Development Bond Bill appropriation in 2022. However, being authorized is not getting the money. So, but that is on the books. That is on the books, and it is valid until four, five years. So one of the things that is an important thing for us to look at is, hey, why don't we collaboratively reach out to the State House and say, where is it? You know, I mean, you know, gee, this is a great project. You know, we've got a huge opportunity to really set a new standard, you know? So how do we get that facilitated? And at the same time, I showed you that development that is going on in Sandwich right now. That's something on the order of 100 million dollars. So that's a project that we're involved in. So we are not going to be going begging to do the things that we're talking about doing. But in a sense, what I'm here for this evening is a follow-on to the collaborative spirit that I have found with Mark, with Thomas, with Phil, of course. And that is, let's circle the wagons. Because I'll be honest with you, those slides that I kind of put up there where it says there's no avoiding it, climate change, sea level rise, all of these issues, these aren't issues that the kids don't see. These aren't issues that the kids don't worry about. These are issues that are front and center for these kids. And the kids are asking, what can we do? How can we take care of this? And that's what this is set up to do. This is to set the standard to say, not woe is me. This is the greatest opportunity to be presented to humankind, and we need to embrace it, and we need to lead.
Yeah, and just to follow up, all of these things that are currently happening are in the process in the high school. It's just not happening on the size and, you know, scale that we hope to have one day. So some of these things that we're talking about are, again, being on a smaller scale, whether in a classroom or a greenhouse or the front of the D Y school. And the hope and expectation is, with the correct funding, we can build a facility to do this all in one place, you know, in a larger scale that the, you know, entire Cape can benefit from. And there's been a lot of work through funding and different organizations that, as Brian talked about, who have donated these items or purchased these items through grants or through different funds for the school district in order for our students to be a part of it. And again, the hope and goal for the Earthshot, you know, the idea is that, you know, we can win this prize and be able to make it. But all the things that Brian and the school district have been working on are showing that we're interested in it. We're utilizing what we have. We want to build it as part of what D Y is and then prove to them that, you know, if given the opportunity, we will continue and do everything we can. So Brian, I appreciate you, you know, explaining this and letting us know because we could get the call that we won the Earthshot. And you guys should be like, what are you talking about? We have 1.5 million dollars to build something on our campus. So we appreciate all the stuff you've done. The Community Garden is definitely, you know, driving by every day. Seeing the abundance of stuff growing is a great thing. And I know Ava, who's playing volleyball right now, has, you know, talked about it and, you know, is really passionate about it as well. So to see that the students are passionate about where they live and what's important is important. So thank you, Brian.
Thank you, thank you. I look forward to working with you.
And then we'll move to the next item, and Dr. Smith will present the strategic plan and then the action plan presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to present the 2025-2026 action plan for the strategic plan. So just to start, as a reminder, we have three strategic objectives that span a five-year gap, starting with last year through '29. I'm not, again, I'm not going to read them to you, but we have three overarching strategic objectives. The first one being largely focused on academic achievement, the overall achievement for everyone, as well as a focus on eliminating achievement gaps. The second one is focused largely on our operations as a district and how we improve operations, and then, and our effectiveness as an organization. And then the third one is around developing a long and short-term facilities needs plan. And the development of an action plan is, how do we take these big things that are five-year plans with really big goals and objectives and ideas, and then narrow down and say, okay, so what are we actually going to do this year in order to move towards these big objectives? So first, in March, I think it was, you know, gave the committee a mid-year action report or progress report. So first, I just want to wrap up last year before moving into next year, or this year. So just as this, we're going to start with a progress report for last year's action plan. So where did we end with last year's action plan? So we, first, just a quick reminder of the key. So dark, D Y green is we met or accomplished it. The yellow is it's in progress. The orangey color behind schedule and red, we haven't started it. And so under that first objective, we focused on two of the initiatives. Again, there are multiple initiatives under each objective, and these were the two initiatives that we focused on last year. And then they had action steps for us to accomplish. And this is where you can see that we ended up at the end of this summer, which is largely, most of it was accomplished. There's a couple of things that are still in process, which is, this school year, really, some of the things that we accomplished just needs some follow-up communication at the school level around what our expectations are, which is really will continuously be ongoing, quite frankly, around what does good quality instruction look like? And then, as we work, and you'll see some parts of that again this year in this year's action plan, but what does a good quality professional learning community look like at the school level? And then, will we start to see those practices in place as we get out into the building? So again, that's sort of ongoing, continuing monitoring. This next initiative, ultimately, we determined to pause it. And quite frankly, I determined to pause it. And that's because this, and you'll see sort of when we get to the lessons learned at the end, and I'll describe this in a little bit more detail when we get to the end. But this initiative isn't really the right fit for D Y right now at this time. And I'll explain that when we get a little bit further along. But we just weren't ready for this type of a focus. We need to have a different focus area. So this, we're putting this particular initiative on pause. So then the next, as we move into our second strategic objective, we had three under this that we used, that we had for focus areas. So one focused on student data, the second one on telling the D Y story, and then the third one on developing a set of core values for the district. So the data initiative is completely accomplished. The team did everything that it was supposed to do. There was a subcommittee in charge of this, and it's ready actually for launch. So you'll see a sort of a next step for this in our, this coming action plan, where now it's about implementing, this team had to determine, you know, what we were using, how we're using, and then find a sort of a better, essentially find a better way of doing it. And they have determined that. And so now we're going to be into launching and then improving data literacy as we head into this next year. The next was around the communications or improving, or telling the D Y story. So again, almost everything was accomplished here. You know, a large, you know, a big part of this was hiring the communications and community relations coordinator position. And then a lot of this work got handed off to that role. So you see, Lilo was very busy last year, got a lot of things accomplished. And then one is still sort of us figuring out, as a district, how each school is telling its story, and then how are we celebrating successes and really building out that consistency as a district? So that's still an area that's still in progress. You'll notice each, this year, a next step that we're taking, we worked on streamlining our district level. For example, our social media accounts. So this, as we step into this year, each school is now going to have at least one social media account. And so again, we're just continuing to move these things forward. And then the last one was the development of the core values, which this went through an entire, this one was behind schedule last year, but we were able to ramp it right up, right as we get to the end of the year. And you all voted in August to approve the new core values. So we were able to bring this one across the finish line right at the end of the year. So then that brings us to the third strategic objective, which is around the capital improvement planning. And as I've mentioned multiple times, you know, the change in staffing with our assistant soup for finance, and then having interim in place, and then now bringing Susan onboard. This whole objective has definitely fallen pacing a little bit behind where we'd like to be. So you'll see several things here that either haven't been started or are behind schedule. And you'll see that reflected as we get into the next year's plans. But we have made some progress. We have got some things done. We actually were able to bring in another retired person to get some things done. Plus, some things have been done, even just in the short time that Susan's been on, we've been able to get some things accomplished and chip away at this. As well as the next piece, which is focused on the financial side, we have some things in progress. Nothing really done yet, but we're starting to make some headway on this. I'm confident. I'm confident that we're gonna be much further along with this by the time we get to the midpoint. Well, again, it'll, it'll look a little bit different, but it's, it's not a ton different because again, we didn't make a ton of progress. All right. So I wanna just share as well some, some, some early signs of the success we've been having. As, you know, some signs that all this hard work is paying off that, and, and I'm not here taking any credit for any of this because I don't do any of this stuff, right? So everything I'm about to show you, I don't do any of this work with the kids. So this is all hard work that, that the teachers are doing with the kids or that the principals are doing with the teachers that ultimately are doing it with the kids. But it is worth celebrating. So first thing here is three years of MCAS data in grades, well, you're looking at either in blue, three to five, or just grade three, and this is our math data. So this, the reason we're focused on math is this is where we've had the most consistent over the last multiple years, the same curriculum, we've had consistent P D and we focus mostly at five, K to five, but this is also where the kids are coming up through the system, right? So the kids, you know, you now have third graders who've had multiple years of the P Ds, they had it in K, they had, I mean, the curriculum, they had it in K, they had it in one, they had it in two, now they're taking the MCAS in three. And what you see is three years in a row of consistent improvement in the aggregate on the math score, three to five. And you see again, the third graders who are the ones you see even the most marketed improvement on the math. This is another way of looking at the data, which doesn't go back, it goes as far as 23, 24, but this is actually the second year, I think, of implementation of the math curriculum. And you see, so while we're still, even in this year, lagging the state average, what this is looking at is compared, our increase in the percentage of kids meeting or exceeding the state average was more than the increase of the state average, right? So the state went up by like one percentage point where we went up by 5.6 percentage points. So we had a much bigger increase than the state did on our aggregate score. Now, some people don't believe in MCAS. So this is looking at our other data point, which we have internally, which is our MAP data. So this is fall to spring data, so we assess three times a year. So this is taking the kids, comparing them from when they first get assessed in the fall, which will happen shortly, to when they get assessed at the end of the year. And the top number is, and this is broken down by aggregate by the grade level, so the top number is their growth score. So a 50% growth score is roughly like a year's growth in a year's time. This is nationally normed. So it's like, if you're 50th percentile, you're like right in the middle, right? You're doing, you know, as good as half the country and not as good as half the country, right? You're right about doing averages of everybody else. So you'll see, and then the bottom number is achievement. So again, you'll see in the fall, the number on the left is where did their achievement rank? Again, so where were they percentage-wise compared to the rest of the kids who took that assessment? Again, it's a national norm versus where were they in the spring? You'll notice two things. One, the growth in every single grade level, and it'll be the same when I switch sides because this goes all the way up, slides when I go all the way up to fifth grade. You'll notice every single grade, the growth is above 60%. In some cases it hits almost, or actually in some grades it goes above 70%. And then every single grade, the achievement is higher in the fall than it was in, I mean, excuse me, higher in the spring than it was in the fall, meaning the teachers are having a positive impact on the achievement of the kids that are sitting in front of them, right? So the, the kids that came in in the fall had one particular achievement level and they left with a higher one, which it seems intuitive, but it's not, the data doesn't always say that same thing, right? Because again, you're, you're comparing their achievement to everybody else. So they, their achievement grew more than the national average. So again, you see that here and in some cases, you know, it's significant. The percentage, you know, you look at that fourth grade, it's 11 percentage points that they grew compared to the national average by the impact of those fourth grade teachers. Those fourth grade teachers made that move on those kids. And then at the high school, this is, the, the blue is the percentage of, or excuse me, the number of kids, so the number of AP tests taken. So in 2023, the high school got an award for access to AP. So that was already a high number. And over the la, next two, two years after that, they've continued to increase the number of kids taking the AP exams, while the percentage of kids getting a score of three or better continues to stay essentially the same. And so what that ultimately means is you've got, for, I should've looked at my slides before I stood up here and I don't have it in my notes, but I think it's like 90 more kids or 90 more tests are scoring at a three or better, right? So because more kids are taking the test and the percentage is largely the same, so more kids are scoring at a three or better. So the high school continues not, so if, if they were just pushing more kids into the, the exam then, and, and kids were bombing, you'd see the percentage of kids dropping down that are scoring a three or better. And then the last one, this one, I, whoops, I just got like two, two days ago. So we have a, a strategic plan outcome that's specifically focused on this one, which is to increase the percentage of students that, the state gives us a, a particular marker to look at for our students who are in our English development program, right? So our English language learners. The state essentially, I don't know who came up, I'm sure it's based upon something and I probably should know this before I stand up here, but the, is a, it's like a six-year span that students are expected to, to develop English, right? To go from a newcomer with no English to be English proficient. And so essentially, what the state does is they, the first time the students take the access test, which is the test that students take to determine their English proficiency, they take that score, whatever they get, and then they divide it by six. And they say, okay, so then in year two, they should get to here, in year three, they should get to here, so on and so forth, until they get to year six. And, and if a student is, makes progress, the progress that's expected, then they get us, they get a thing called making progress. And we get a report back about what percentage of your students are making progress and what percentage of your students are not making progress. So we have goals set around, because it was an area that we had identified that we were not doing as well as we should've been doing, on the percentage of students that are making progress in their English language development. So we are on target for our, our goal for making, and in, in all the ones that are yellow, we're actually ahead of schedule. But again, for the last two years, we're on target for our strategic plan outcome. So again, these are all signs, early signs that the strategic plan is producing the outcomes that we're looking for. All right. So as we head into next year, a couple of things that were different in developing this. So I spent some time reviewing progress on the year one action plan and set the priority actions for year two. So this was a little bit different than the first year. So the first year, and this goes back to sort of why we had to put one on pause. So in the first year, it was really important for me to ensure that everybody was empowered in the process and I still believe in that. But I think we got a little adrift in a couple of things and, and not necessarily having the right focus as a team. And I don't think we all quite understood what we were all talking about and necessarily where our highest leverage area for focus was. So this year, in reflecting as I got towards the end of the year, I determined it might be a little bit better for me to sit back and say, okay, where are we and where, at a big, big picture level, do we need to focus to go next? There's, I have the, the privilege of being able to sit and see just the broader picture. I don't have the detail level view that a lot of other positions have, but I do have the advantage of seeing the bigger picture. So from the bigger picture, I was able to specific, to determine what were the next targeted actions for each of our, our objectives that we needed to move forward. Then I, when we met in July, I shared those with, with the leadership team, actually shared with them a little bit ahead of the meeting, but, you know, here's, here's where we're gonna focus for the next year. Then the team, in teams, I developed focused, deliberate teams last year. It wasn't as purposeful that I put the teams together. This year it was much more purposeful that I created the teams. And so the teams were determined to develop, then this is where the ownership came back in, is each team then took the priority and developed, okay, so then how are we gonna accomplish that priority? And set the action steps and the timelines in order to accomplish the priority areas. And then when we came back in August, they reviewed, revised and finalized them, because we meet two days in July and two days in August. Then, I can't remember if it's on this slide or not and I've lost track of keeping up with my paper over here. So it may, I may end up repeating myself with a bullet in a second, but what we'll also do differently this year is we, when we meet as a leadership, I have a couple different leadership structures, but one with that entire team that meets in the summertime, we will meet once a month throughout the course of the year and they will get back together in those teams. And there's a, a lead in charge of each group, in charge of each of the strategic actions and they will monitor the plan throughout the course of the year instead of that all being my responsibility to monitor. I'm, it's just set up a little bit structurally different and it puts a little bit more collective ownership on the plan. All right. So a few things learned from last year. One is that, again, I'm still learning the job a little bit. I have to remind myself, still just year three as superintendent. So part of my job was, or understanding what is my job is to own more of the global view and strategic direction for the plan. So that was why I believed it was my responsibility to set the strategic priorities. And then distribute leadership on the development on how we were gonna get there and progress monitoring among the team members. So that's where I said we'd change the structure for the progress monitoring over time. And I, I did have it as bullet. So I've already said this one. And so again, we'll monitor this through monthly meetings throughout the year. And, and I, again, again, I deliberately structured the teams and then deliberately put a particular facilitator in charge of each team, because that was something I'd gotten back from the, from the leadership team as feedback as well, is sometimes people don't know like who's responsible for what. So in this way, everybody knows who's the lead facilitator is on each group, so they always, everybody has a point person for each particular initiative. All right. So with that, you all have a copy, I think it's right after this in your packet, you have a copy of the full plan. I'm not gonna run through the entire full plan. And I'll provide an update in the winter on where we are. And I'm gonna open it up for any, any questions. What I will do though is just quickly show you a little bit of what it looks like, which looks very similar to what you would've seen last year. All the stuff in the front is all the same. The only thing that changed in the front is this section here on the core values, because we updated it to reflect the new core values. But everything else here is all the same, because the strategic objectives didn't change, the, the overall initiatives didn't change. And this is all just definitions. Where you get to the new part is here, where it says 25-26 action plan. And so this is, what are we focused on in 25-26? So you'll see, you know, we're gonna focus on strategic initiative 1A. And then I added this, this year, we're, okay, what's the specific action we're taking this year? So last year, we did, we've, we were working on this initiative. We were still doing this, this is where I said that team went out and they looked at all the different data that we were doing this year. But this year, an element that they're doing is they're specifically focused on developing data literacy among key instructional leaders within the district to ensure decisions are made based upon actionable data and initiatives are monitored. And then the team developed these action steps. And it follows the same structure as last time, who's responsible, what's the date? And then we'll monitor the status as we go throughout. There's nothing in the status yet because we just started. But this is where, and I'll put this like I did before, I'll give you a green, yellow, orange, red version of this, you know, sometime in the month, in, in the middle of the, middle of the year. I forget when we put it, I think we put it in January, I think I'm gonna come back. But this is how it's laid out for each of them. Again, this is also under the same initiative, but we have another action under this, which is related, I think I mentioned during the update, we're gonna do a little bit more focus work around PLCs. So this one's more focus work around PLCs. And again, I'm, I'm not gonna go through all this, that, I'm already probably talking longer than I wanted to. But that's, that's how it's all laid out and goes all the way through and there's a group in charge of each one of these made up of, depending upon the size of the, depending upon the initiative, the smallest group has four people in it, the largest one I think has eight, because we are a decent sized team when you get us all together. And I think I'm done. And through the chair, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Anyone have any questions or comments? Ms. Bemis.
I guess, this is, from my information, clarifying something. So I did look at the March one. And yes, it's amazing the progress you made. So first, kudos to everybody. But under 1A, sort of give me a, a better understanding how using data improves instruction. I'm, I'm trying to link and I did see though, it's open arch, architect that everybody's gonna use sort of as the foundational way to share information. What information or data would, you know, what kind of information is gonna be shared and how could it be used to influence or improve instruction?
Yeah. So one key element, so, so if I use the example of, of the one that we paused as an example to, so I'm gonna, I am gonna answer your question, I'm just gonna take a little bit of a, a roundabout way of getting there. So the example for the initiative that we paused was, was centered around strength-based instruction. The longer we spent talking about that and the more time we spent doing our learning walks and understanding where we were as a district, strength-based instruction was further down the path, further down the continuum than where we were right now as a district. It's not the, you know, if, if, sort of take the idea of like meeting a student where they are instructionally, right? So if we're thinking about meeting the district where the district is, the district was not ready for strength-based instruction, professional development. There's other things foundationally that we needed to get in place. So it's time to put that one on pause and we had other things that we needed to focus on. So think about it from the, in order for us to really be able to make high-quality decisions in the classroom, we need to be making data-informed decisions for our, ultimately at the classroom level for our students. But before that, we need to be able to put timely data into teachers' hands. Well, we don't really have a good system for doing that. So the first thing we needed to do is identify, what do we have, where do we have it, can we get it all in one place? That was last year. Now, we need to understand, like what level of capacity do, from the leadership level all the way down, do we have even for understanding how to, once we get it all in one place, do we know what it's telling us? Do we know at the school level, at the leadership level, how to use that to marshal our existing resources? So do we know how to implement our interventionists? Do we know how to utilize our coaches? Do we know how to move our biggest resource, which is people, around at the building level? And then do we know how to start to use those to drive PLC-level conversations from the leadership level to impact instruction? So do you, if you're gonna have a team, if you're an elementary teacher, you're gonna meet with your third grade team about what you're seeing for patterns and how they're gonna start to make decisions to, to make either curricular or instructional changes to impact something that you're seeing. And we determined that that was not the way that we were necessarily doing things here. So that's where we determined the next best step was. Then from there, I anticipate the next step will be then moving it down to the classroom level and helping teachers then understand how to best make, but you know, at the same time, we also have a curriculum implementation going on for six through eight, right? So there are other things going on too, right? But that's from a data standpoint, that's, you know, it's, it's a set of steps that are all building towards something. And that's where, if I step back to the initial piece, that's where, from my seat, I have the ability to see, I don't know, I'm trying to think of a good analogy, but I, I, the strategy, the vision, the long-term plan and that what are the next sequence of steps that needed to happen? Does that answer your question? I know it took me a little while to get there, but. I know it took me a little while to get there, but.
Any other questions? Mr. Morris.
I can see that these implementation of changes are geared toward not only looking at progress, but also why did we do something better? Or if it's not better, what it needed to implement a change? And it involves leadership, it involves the staff being part of the process, as opposed to the old SRA days where your kid's given a standardized test, and the parents are given, your kid comes in at the 67th percentile. In other words, this is entirely different way of looking at how knowledge and teaching goes on, and how it's accepted, and then judged based on the test scores and other classroom viewpoint. Now, I sit here as a member of a school committee who benefits from these instructions that you're giving us, and if I have a question, I just raise my hand and show how little I know. But the question comes, how do you involve, clearly the kids are involved and the staff, but what is the role of the parent in absorbing this new, newer way of getting information out and tested back? How does the parent fit into this equation?
So I mean, I think part of, part of my job is to communicate, well, is to do two things. Is one is to work through my, through the buildings who have a closer relationship with parents to ensure that we're all working together, right? I need to make sure that as we roll each of these initiatives out, and it's part of the ownership piece, right, to make sure that each of us is all working towards the same thing. It was actually part of what we talked, it was just a brief comment that I made at convocation, but that there is no, because, and it is not an uncommon phrase, right? It'll be like, oh, well, the district needs to do whatever, the district needs to work on blah, blah, blah. Well, we are the district, right? There's no, the schools and the district. Like, the schools are the district, we are the district. So, and I think, so part of it is, is by, by design, by us working on all this together, my goal is that we're building a shared sense of responsibility, and, and we're building a shared sense of ownership around all these, whatever it is we're working towards. So if it's working towards building data literacy, whether it's working towards any of these initiatives, that we're building a shared sense of ownership, so that I don't have to be the only person who's communicating it. And I try to use my platform, you know, I do have a couple of mechanisms for sharing information, and that I'm sharing something consistently, and that I'm sharing with the principals that I'm going to be sharing this, so that they then can also understand like the messaging that's coming from me. Do I do it perfectly? No, but I try. The other message, well, I don't mind, I'll talk about that later. And then, I think the third piece is, as I mentioned earlier in August, when I outlined my goals, I think part of what I'm going to try to do a little bit better this year is then get out and do some more listening again, and try to meet with parents in a way around some of these topics that are aligned with our, I want to do some things that are not necessarily aligned with our strategic plan, but I think there's also will be some opportunities to now listen with some focused topics around the strategic plan that are pertinent to families. I mean, I think, you know, the capital planning stuff, I think the families at ME Small are going to be really interested about stuff. And then we're going to have a conversation about the future of Baker, I think that's, you know, there's going to be certain things that are going to be pertinent to certain people, but then other stuff, you know, I don't know, if we're talking about HVAC units, I mean, I don't think that's going to draw a big crowd, unless something's really broken and, you know, like, you know, you.
[inaudible]
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly. So I think it'll depend upon the topic, I think, too, of what will draw people in. But I, you know, I think there's, I do want to also create opportunity for conversation around topics that are relevant as well. It's a long-winded answer.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. We'll move to the next item, which is FY25 closeout update. Is it Dr. Smith or Dr. Gilson, I believe? Dr. Gilson? You got to push the.
Yep, thank you.
Welcome.
I can comfortably say that my day was spent in three budget years. I was doing, I started in the morning, and I was doing preliminary projections for FY27. I was approving purchases that all the schools are making in the current budget year. And then also, I had the opportunity to be looking at reconciling bank statements in FY25 to make sure that they were matching what we had in our budgeting software program. So where we are right now, basically in terms of final expenditures and encumbrances, we spent July and August closing out POs, expending incoming and paying bills that were still remaining from the FY25 fiscal year. We also were looking at reconciling our payroll, so that we could effectively begin paying people again in this fiscal year. So we had to look at how our grants and our revolving accounts were offsetting payroll. And right now, the major thing that we're having to take a look at is the reconciliation of the bank statements and the matches that we have in our fiscal system, which is Infinite Visions. Due to the departure of the previous finance director in late February, and the simultaneously departure of the assistant, I believe it was the assistant treasurer, we lost about four months' worth of ability to keep up with the reconciliations between statements and the actual recording of those statements in the software, the software program. So those are critical to being able to complete our end-of-the-year report, and the bank statements are like literally like this thick. So tomorrow, the treasurer and the accountant and I will be sitting down to have a continued discussion about how to move those along quicker. And so I think we'll enjoy that, and I'm looking forward to that. But we're also beginning to basically move towards getting to a point where we can begin the September end-of-year report, which is good. And, but, but in full transparency, where we really need to move along is the reconciliation of the bank statements with what we have in our system. So, so we're looking forward to continuing the resolution there, and it promises to be, I think, pretty engaging. And we'll look to do that as soon as we, as soon as is humanly possible.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay.
Next, we have the subcommittees, representatives liaison reports, school committee liaisons for select board. I know Mr. Glenn is not here for Yarmouth, anything from the town of Dennis to add? Perfect. Next, we'll move to the superintendent's report, recognition of donations and acknowledgements.
All right, thank you. So starting with some donations, so first, in your consent agenda, you'll have a couple of donations to approve. I just want to just take a moment to thank the contributors for those donations. So first, from the Vet and Friends, is a donation of school supplies from earlier this year to each of the schools for students in need. Those supplies were distributed through our school social workers. So again, thank you very much to vets and friends for that very thoughtful donation to help ensure that all of our students were starting the school year with everything that they needed. Next was almost $3,900 to the high school from the athletic, for the, to the high school for athletics and band, let me try that again, almost $3,900 to be used for athletic and band user fees from the Cape Cod Foundation, from this, from the Dolphin Dash Fund. Now, you may remember there was an earlier donation, I think it might have been in August, if not, it was in July. And so the, just, just a little backstory for this, there was originally one account set up that, way back in the origin of the Dolphin Dash, that was just for athletics. When the user, when it was sort of expanded to include the band, the second account was set up. So this is essentially closing out that athletic-only account. So this is what was left in that athletic-only account, and the official closing of that account. And then last is, again, about $1,300 from the Sailing Booster Club. And so again, thank you to the Sailor Booster Club, and that they're donating to the DY Sailing Team to support the needs of that particular team. So, you know, I've said it before, I'll say it a thousand times, the support of our community to our students, to our staff, to our families, just continues to be unbelievably generous throughout the, throughout the year, and it's one of the great things that makes this district so special. And then next, just a special recognition, I'm going to talk about the start of school a little bit later in my report, but one of the things about getting out at the start of the school was the noticeable, I don't even want to call it a shine, but the, I just really want to call out specifically our facilities and custodial team. So there, I think I mentioned before, there was more facilities work in particular this summer than I think has happened in a long time, but like you walk in the lobby of ME Small, and it is bright, it, not just from the clean, so the custodial team did a great job cleaning this year, but like there's a significant amount of just upkeep painting that was done this year. Station Avenue, bright when you walk in there, there was painting, carpeting replaced over at Ezra Baker, just a lot of the spaces that really needed a lot of attention, got it this year. And it's noticeable like when you walk in, walk in the entrances of all those buildings. Cafeteria over at Station Ave, like just a lot of the spaces that, common spaces where a lot of people gather are just bright, just have a whole new, I don't know, energy, I guess for lack of a better, better phrase. And I just really want to give special props to the facilities team for getting all that work organized. I know we've had some work done at Central Office as well, and so like a lot, there were just a lot of projects, right? So it was, it was an opportunity for any one of those to have fallen down, fallen apart, for work not to have gotten done, for somebody to say, that's too much, you know, we'll do this or that, but really, just kept saying yes, kept saying, it was like a summer of and. And, and all, you know, there was like one or two things that didn't get accomplished, but pretty much everything got done. And I guess a big kudo, kudos to them for getting it done. Next, DYMS, DYI, this building's field construction update. So since the last, yes, yeah. So since the, since our last public meeting, so I know I've updated the committee a little bit in email, but since the last public meeting, the projects hit a few delays. As the committee knows, we put like several quality control measures in place, a lot of testing, to basically to make sure we didn't have the same repeated failure as the last time. And so that's included testing in every single phase of the installation process, and that testing and due diligence did cause some delays, did cause some material to be replaced early on in the process. So where we should have the whole project completed at this point, it is not completed this project, as the chair mentioned on the way in, they are essentially dusting the last bit of material onto the lower fields. The lower field should be all buttoned up, and the, the upper field is on schedule to be completed at the end of this month. So the middle school will have access for athletics to the lower field. The plan is to reposition the construction fencing, so that the middle school can have access to the lower field, and then we've made plans between the middle school and Station Ave, they've worked out that the, the, the big field that's sort of right next to the office of the superintendent, that'll be used as a secondary field for the middle school, and they've worked it out with recess schedules and phys ed and everything over at Station Ave, so that the middle school can access that field as well for the time being, until they can get back up onto the upper field. Which leads into the Station Ave playground. So construction on that project is well underway. If you drive by there, you'll see it's all fenced off, they've already started moving dirt, and over the next week or so, they should do all, all the subgrading should be done, which is basically getting it all to level. They've, I believe they've already started putting thing, everything down. I know the first thing they wanted to do is get, part of that includes, they took up the old, yeah, pavers that was a basketball court, and then it's going to be a paved basketball court. So I know that was one of the first things that they wanted to get in and done. We have progress meetings every two weeks with that group, so I think we have one next week, I think? I don't know, I've lost track. Between all the different construction meetings, it's a little bit to keep track of, but anyways, that's an aside. And then, then they start bringing the, the actual equipment in pretty quick. The equipment's actually already on site, it's already tucked away behind the maintenance yard, so like all the, you know, I don't know, I don't think we actually have swings, but you know what I mean, like the play structures, thank you, that was the word I was looking for. They're already all here on site tucked away, so they'll start going in, and the project is on schedule, should be completed prior to Thanksgiving break. You know, the biggest thing will be as long as the weather holds it, because the biggest thing is like you need a certain number of days in a row with no rain and the right temperatures for the poured-in-place material. So that's, that's, we'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't run into any problems with that. Next, biggest, the business program review. So you may remember from my goals, one of the superintendent's goals is to take action on the business program review that Dr. Gilson mentioned, is from Infinite Visions, so the company through which we manage the, all the budget and the, and the business transactions related to our finances. So we had requested them to do this business program review, just sort of like an audit, it's not like an audit audit, but it's sort of like an audit of the way we do things and do business, yeah. And the purpose was to determine, you know, what parts of the software, software were currently underutilizing, what parts we might be using incorrectly, what additional products that they offer might help us meet our goals, et cetera, et cetera. So some of the major findings, they gave us like a 20-something page report, but, so I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. So one thing is there's opportunity for improved user access through a couple different ways. One, they have this web portal access, which will be better for all of our users to be able to get into, because we had people in like through an old, old legacy system, and then like an old-new legacy system, and, and people could see different things and could do different things depending upon which way they were logging in. And so we're going to transition folks into the portal system, plus it allows for single sign-in, which is a better process for security and for ease for, for end-users to get in. Plus, then it'll allow for us to have better control over account types, right? So, you know, I have one level of access and account control type versus the person who does payroll versus the principal's admin on the end-user end, right? And, and we can set it up by an account type versus putting in one individual and saying, okay, what type of permissions do I want to give that individual? And do I remember the next time a new person gets hired and they come in, and now do I give them the same? Or am I just going to say, this position gets that type of account? And that's, we want to build it that way going forward, and redesign it that way. Next is chart of accounts. Essentially, our chart of accounts, which is like all the different account codes, right? That hasn't been cleaned up in, I think the report says years, is the phrase that's in there. So it needs, it needs a cleanup, and there's several unused accounts in there, and it just creates for confusion and not great transparency, quite frankly, for you, for the public. So we're going to work on consolidation and quite frankly deleting of old accounts. It'll be a process that'll take the year, because, because at this point, we've already created FY26, so you can't really delete it now, so it's something we have to work towards for FY27. But it'll be, if we don't start it now, then we'll be in the same boat in FY27. But it will create better transparency and clarity going forward. Then next is position budgeting within the system as well, so right now. So right now, the way we do, you know, so like every position should be tied to a, a cost, right? Right now, it's sort of done in, outside the system in like an Excel. But it really can be done inside the system and should be more helpful in forecasting for costs down the road. We should be able to say, "Okay, so next year, you know, superintendent's supposed to make this much. Assistant superintendent's supposed to make that much." Business, so on, for every position. And we should be able to use that better for forecasting inside the system. Plus if somebody terminates or leaves the district, you know, we should be able to do replacement costs, et cetera, et cetera. And so we, we're gonna move towards implementing that whole part of the system so we can do, have a better sense of position utilization within the system. Again, currently it's being done sort of outside the system and then being brought into the system. And then the next piece is around cloud. It's sort of tied back to that cloud base, but there's a whole user side of that, so employee access. Right now, if you want, well, I'm not gonna get into that right now. Essentially employer user access allows for a whole bunch of functions to be so much easier than the way we currently do them. So we currently push everything around by paper, email, or maybe some of it. Well, we've gotten away by phone calls because that's just, it's too easy to impersonate somebody. Like it's too, too bad for fraud, right? So, but a lot of it's still done by paper. So it would allow for, once we set up the employee access portal, which is actually, that work's already even started. It'll allow functions for payroll, emergency contacts, accepting and passing contracts like right now. So let's say you were to become employed with us. You, and you accept the job. It all gets created by pushing a paper that has to get, paperwork is generated, it comes to my office, I sign it, you sign it, then it goes in a paper folder. All that can be done digitally and moved around digitally. If you then take a job as a coach, you know, you wanna do coach soccer, same process happens. It comes to me, I, or the, the letter has to get generated, it comes to me, I sign it, you sign it, goes in your file. All this can be done through this system, which will make us again so much more efficient and fast. Again, for your ability to see your paycheck, your W, get your W or four. The list goes on and on and on and on and on. The next is through our leave process, right? So somebody's out sick, somebody needs to take personal leave. For those of us that have vacation time, that's all again pushed through paper and it lags in the system. So if I wanna know how many vacation days I have left or how much personal time or how many sick time I've used, it's all, imagine six hundred and thirty employees in the district. They, their leave forms start out at the school and they work their way eventually back to one person's desk in the district. And they get a stack of them like this. And once every couple of weeks, she gets a chance to take them and enter them into the system. So that's the way we currently do it. It's not the way we're gonna do it in the future. Again, it's, there's a way for me to, for us to, you to request it through your employee access and then for it to go through an approval chain and then it's automatically entered into the system. Yeah, I know. It's like nineteen fifty-four. Yes, yes. So we're, yeah, there is an app.
I just signed three carbon copy forms from, for Dr. Smith.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, let's see. That's the same. I don't know why I wrote it twice. And then the last is, so, so, uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, you, you, yeah. Maria's heard me complain about this about a thousand times since I started working in this district. But then, oh, and then I guess the last is, well, again, it's the same really. It's just then creating, you can create all sorts of workflows through the employee access to take care of all of these things. So after this, I've, I've assigned Susan and then our H R director to, again, one thing's already in process. But then to take this entire twenty, I don't know, five-page report and to prioritize it. They gave us already sort of a prioritized list of recommendations, but I want it to be what most works for D Y. So I've asked, I've assigned them the task of taking it and figuring out, okay, where are we gonna go next? What's gonna be the first couple of things? Plus it's in, you'll see it in the strategic action plan as well. This is one of the items. So there, I've given them a bit of time to work on that and come back to me with, okay, where are we going next? So that is where that currently stands. And then last, school opening on the twenty-sixth. I had this distinct privilege of welcoming back our staff for convocation, August twenty-sixth, obviously, to kick off the school year. After a very thoughtful inspirational speech by Ms. Bemis. It was, it was, I was, I was very, very impressive. I loved the way she tied together her story. It was, I, I take some notes actually personally. You're a great storyteller. So we took a few moments together as faculty, actually to celebrate, several of the slides that I showed here were slides that I showed to the faculty really to, because it was, like I mentioned, it's their hard work, not mine. And I really wanted to make sure that they, they saw their, the dividends of their hard work. And then we also talked about what the staff could expect, you know, sort of a truncated version of the, the action plan. So what could they sort of expect that they were gonna see in year two? And then my sort of parting message was this idea of progress, not perfection. That we live in this world, it's like a curated world at this point, right? Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, like everybody shows you their best thing. They don't show you all their failures. And so it's really easy to think everything out there is perfect and that there's no place for failure. So I actually shared with them my top five failures from the last year. But the point was that from, I was trying to give them the message, which I really believe that it, from, from the superintendent down, as we move forward on all these big things, the point is not to hit it right every time, right? It was actually that I just, we're just looking as a district to try to move forward, like take the next step. We're just trying to, everybody move forward and, and take the next best step forward. And as long as we're all continuing to move forward, we're gonna be fine. And then on Wednesday, the third, we welcomed back the students and then we were in full live and in session. And I was able to get out for the start of school to the high school, this school and to M E S as their days got started, as kids were getting off the bus out of their cars. So, you know, it was great to see all the smiles, the warmth, you know, to see Principal Bennett and Officer Nick out in the front waving to the kids as they were coming in to, at this school, they had balloons out in the front as they were welcoming the kids in through the auditorium door, all the staff out front. And then at ME Small, it was like all hands on deck in the lobby. I got a picture of it from the back, you know, again, the little kids, like the welcoming the kindergartens, kindergarteners in. But it's like, I couldn't even see the kids through the swarm of adults that were in front of me. And then later I was able, so after there, then I went over to Baker. And by then, they were already in session, but I was able to get out with Principal Riley and, and visit some classrooms. And for there, it was different, right? He was like introducing himself, like going around to the classrooms, just saying, "Hey, you know, I'm your principal." But he had actually met a lot of them the night before. He'd done a popsicles with a principal, I think is what he called it. So he was like reintroducing himself to some of the kids. And then, you know, ended at Station Ave. I actually had to come back at a short meeting and then went back. So by the time I got back to Station Ave, it was lunchtime. So then lunch and recess. So, you know, just to already see them starting to establish routines and kids moving in and out. And, and, and then I've been out to the buildings already several times since then. And quite frankly, it's like we never left. Because the, it just, everything's hopping and humming and running on routine. The buses are actually running pretty well on schedule, you know, some, some delays, but we're, we're ironing out, out, fewer than I anticipated. Just because the beginning of the year, you're almost always running into some problems. But there's actually been, we've, we've worked on some things here with the, with the timing on the lights here at the end of the day to try to get the buses out faster because this tends to be the bottleneck in the day. If we don't get out here in time, then it just backs up to the elementary schools, so. And I think that's it. Yep. Any questions through the chair?
Any questions, comments? Ms. Landers?
I just wanna say, you know, congratulations on a great opening. I'm sure there were glitches and I'm sure there was a lot, there were issues to be resolved. But, you know, I saw a fraction, you know, of what we've seen in the past of parents, you know, question, complain, glitching, wait, like all this stuff that we usually see. I mean, there was, I don't wanna jinx anything, but it seemed that things went extremely smoothly. And just so, congratulations to everybody who was involved in the start of school.
Will you still raise your hand, Mr. Morris?
Yeah.
So there's no change in the school committee membership access codes?
Still zero, zero, zero.
Well, listening to the access of what has to be done, not just shiny classrooms, but the paperwork behind the scenes and the planning. And the Cape Cod Collaborative goes through a similar thing. Smaller staff or access to different school groups. The first meeting of the new year is on Wednesday. And I have the packet somewhere here. I, I promise not to read it to you. But I will be driving down there because I'm, I was using my wife's computer to do a Zoom meeting and I noticed it wasn't Phil Morris, it was Deborah Morris. Is this legitimate? Who is this person? So when the executive director sent out something to all the board members about notifying them of the upcoming meeting, let her know we're coming either in person or by Zoom. And by the way, if you don't use your own computer, clue her in so she doesn't have to access contact with the superintendent. And I'm glad to see the selected Massachusetts General Laws for School Committees and School Personnel. It gives me something to read at late at night.
Thank you.
Nice job, nice job.
Great. We'll move into school committee business. The first is a reading, first reading of the Dennis Charmuth reading of school district, school committee goals. When we first met two years ago, the goals hadn't been updated in, we believe, ten years. So we updated them two years ago. And then they've been updated to reflect some of the current changes in the, the district values as well as district roles and procedures. So not gonna read it verbatim, but we have in front of us an updated goals for our twenty-five, twenty-six year. If anyone has any questions or feedback, please send it to Dr. Smith and I. But it reflects, again, some of the changes in the district strategic plan and some of the changes that were made over the last year. Next, we have the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven Dennis Charmuth reading of school district calendar. We do need a vote on this. You know, there was discussion about number of days, start days. And then civil dates were looked. We had change in some added days. And then any other updates, Dr. Smith, that may be on there?
Yeah, so just two things of note, just, just as a reminder, because it has, we put it, we had this discussion around it and then it's been a while. So I just wanna, just to remind you all and the public. So two things that are different on this calendar, and again, this is like a year out now, right? Yeah. But, so the last day of school reflects the hundred and eightieth day. So that's a little bit different than the way we've done things. So this is, because we, it's, it just gets so confusing, like people are, you know, what is? So we're reflecting here the hundred and eightieth day of school. And then if we have to add days because of snow, we will add days. As opposed to reflecting the hundred and eighty-fifth day and then having to back days out. And then how many days do we have? So is it really four days off, three days off, whatever? And then the second thing is, on this calendar, there are no, there are, there are days, the half-days for parent conferences are just K to seven because we do not have parent conferences at the eight through twelve. So unless something changes with pending negotiations with the teachers, but we do not have conferences at eight through twelve. We've had conversations with the bus company. We can make the transportation work. So there's no need to reduce the amount of instructional time the high school students have. There are other days that the high school students have reduced schedule, like for finals. And for, there's a midterm time that they have a half-day. So didn't see a need to have additional times when they had a half-day if we were working out the conferences.
So again, in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, June twenty-second will be the last day unless there's additional days. Unless there's snow days added.
Correct.
I don't know how many times a year the question is, how many days do we need to subtract from the triangle? So currently on this calendar, you do not subtract anything.
Yes. And I'm sure there'll, there'll be an adjustment period, but hopefully we'll just get to a point where people understand that that's the last day. And if we have snow days, we'll add on.
Perfect. Excellent. So I'll take a motion.
By the time I retire, people will get it.
I move that we approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? This passes. And, and I know it's, it seems like it's so far out, but I know people in the medical field and people in other things need to book time out years, a year in advance. It sounds crazy to some of us, but it, it really does make a difference when we can produce it this far in advance. So it's, it's very helpful. And then get so many deals for any places you wanna visit. Great. Next, we have the surplus that we discussed. How many pages I have here? I know it was mostly in vehicles. Yeah. So the, this twenty-sixteen Chevrolet Express, small school bus with a hundred sixty thousand miles. You know, based on the estimate to cost versus the replacement. So we have that and surplus. I think that was it.
I move that we declare the vehicle surplus as presented in the memo.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Perfect. Consent agenda, as Dr. Smith talked about, the donation from Vets and Friends for back-to-school activities. The donations from the closing out of the Dolphin Dash Fund in the amount of three thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars fifty-four cents. And then the donation from the Sailing Account Boosters Club in the thirteen, one thousand three hundred forty-seven-one from August fifth. We motion to move this agenda. Do we have second? All those in favor? Wonderful. Bill's requisitions and payroll. I don't know if I signed anything today. We're all digital, right? Look at that. I felt like, I felt like it was still sitting on Mr. Glenn's seat and no one passed it down. Calendars. So a couple of things to note. One will be the calendar. This Thursday, September eleventh is the first open house for the district. Dennis Charmuth and the immediate school, the building we are in, so four to seven, will have their open house at six P M. And then next week is a busy week. Tuesday, the sixteenth is ME Small. Wednesday, the seventeenth is Station Ave. And Thursday, the eighteenth, for those who show up, probably mostly eighth graders, is that's, all three is on Thursday, the eighteenth. All, every open house starts at six P M. And then the twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday, Ezra Baker has their open house. And then, again, point of note, the Dolphin Dash, Memory of Paul Funk, is Saturday, September twenty-seventh at ten A M at the, the high school. This is earlier than it has been before. So it's very important. And as we saw from the donations, the money raised helps offset user fee costs for athletics and our marching band. So any, we appreciate the community and all the support that that event does, so we hope to see people there. And then our next school committee meeting is September twenty-ninth. What's also is included from discussion from our, our meeting in July is kind of a update of what's gonna be talked over in all of our meetings. So we have an idea of, we have our goals for budget when we have to have things. And then other things that we presented, Dr. Smith talked about January twenty-sixth, which we have our strategic plan progress report. So we get to see hopefully lots of greens and yellows and not so many reds halfway. How about some yellows? We'll see yellows. But we have all that updated. And then at our next meeting, we'll be discussing a possible field trip for twenty-twenty-seven. We'll be discussing the student handbooks and then the high school parking policy, which we had talked about in August. We'll have a revisit on discussion on that. So plenty of- Plenty of exciting topics to come up. Next for public comment, do we have anyone that would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none? Seeing none, does anyone want to make a motion?
I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, we have a second, we have a second. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed, any abstained? Thank you so much, we're excited for the new school year.